We'll call an immediate order. And we have no public audience tonight, so we'll go right to Board and Administrative Communications. So Jen, do you have anything to share?
I have nothing to share. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Sharon, how about you?
Nothing to share.
All right. Mr. Watson?
Nothing to share for Mr. Watson.
Okay. Lynn?
Yeah, just briefly, we we've just finished up all our board meetings with Crick and and Cabe. And well, NSBA is continuing, but we've all taken initiatives toward diversity, equity, and social justice work. And recently in NSBA, we passed our important initiative, which I'll share with you another time, about dismantling institutional racism in education. So that's what we'll be doing this summer as we prepare for school opening all around all around the country.
Great, thank you for all of that. That's going to be a lot of good work, I'm sure. Jeff?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Don?
Nothing for me.
Don?
I can't hear.
Tara?
I have to say, graduation was just amazing. I think the kids were just thrilled. I think they were together at the they were together at the Henry James before the parade. And I think it was the first time they actually were on the just even being on the same premises really was there was palpable how happy they were and how how good they felt about accomplishing something and being able to be together. And I think graduation without the few little bliffs in the technology, it was everyone I heard was really happy with it and was happy that their kids got some sense of normalcy and a chance to walk the stage and be with their friends. And I just I heard so many great things, and I really want to appreciate all the efforts made by by our administration and the school administration to go the extra mile. They made the effort, and it was well appreciated, and it made a big difference to our seniors.
Thanks for sharing that, Tara. That's great.
I'm so glad to hear that. I too have heard from people around town who were just so happy for the kids to be together, so well done. Mrs. Murray?
All right, I have two items tonight. I would like to update the Board of Ed members about the Kathleen McGowan Scholarship awardees for our graduating seniors. These students were recognized during the high school award ceremony on June 2. Just as a reminder, the McGowan Educational Enhancement Fund is a district-wide activity, and it was created by the Board of Education to honor the legacy of Kathleen McGowan. She taught in the Simsbury Public Schools for 35 years and promoted such high standards of education. Many former students who still reside in the area can fondly recall the learning, the three Rs, the reading, writing, and arithmetic from Ms. McGowan. The source of the funding is from this generous donation made by the estate of Kathleen McGowan to the Simsbury Board of Education, and the board's intent is to use the interest earned by the fund to keep honoring her legacy into the future. So we honor five students, each from the elementary, the five elementary schools. And this year, the recipients of the Kathleen McGowan Scholarship were from Terrifield School, Talia Alibrio, and she's attending Western Connecticut State University. From Central School, Marissa Sestone, and she's going to Roger Williams University. From Tooton Hills Elementary School, Abigail Fabian, going to Boston University. From Latimer Lane School, Kylie Doran, going to the University of Connecticut. And from Squadron Line School, Philip Shankman, and he's attending Curry College. So it was really a wonderful and I've received beautiful thank you notes from these students who will be entering the field of education. So congratulations to those five students. The second item is a quick update on our reopen teaching and learning teams. Last week, we held our Tier Two secondary meeting. Tomorrow morning, we have two meetings. We have our elementary Tier Two meeting, and we have a second secondary Tier Two meeting as well. Our administrators, our leaders of these levels are gathering names of interested parents and guardians, and those meetings will be scheduled for the week of July 6. Next week, Matt, Neil, and I will be hosting a virtual PTO, PTC leaders meeting to provide them update on both the operational and management team and the teaching and learning team, and to gather information from them as well.
That's great. The McGowan kids, as a parent of a recipient, my daughter is having her big job interview tomorrow, so fingers crossed. It goes a long way, and it meant a lot to her, and I wish all these kids all the luck in the world, and so glad it's it's one of my favorite awards we give out, just because it was such a wonderful gift to us all.
Yes.
Amy?
Oh, I have a financial update related to the COVID impact that the board had requested at the last meeting. So to date, we've spent about $210,000 on COVID-related expenditures from items including signage, laptops, protection equipment, Chrome, and then desks that we'll be purchasing for the upcoming school year. We've also seen a decrease in the revenue in two funds in particular that we are going to have to supplement. One is the Food Services Fund for about $55,000, and then the other is the Pay to Play Program for about $110,000. So overall, right now, our impact is about $375,000. But as you may recall, at the last quarterly update, I provided an estimate of significant savings to the Board of Education because the schools have been closed over the course of the last several months. So the savings of the schools combined with offsetting the COVID expenditures to date, we're still expecting to see net savings to the Board of Education of about $180,000. And this includes no use of the non-lapsing. Any questions?
So yes, I have one, not a question, but a statement, since I was one of the I was the one that asked if we could get that. So going forward, can you put it in writing for us?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Lemke?
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to give a quick update relative to extended school year services, specifically for our students with disabilities. So despite many kinds of potential safety and health guidelines that we have to follow, we are going to, by and large, deliver extended school year services through a virtual model, through a distance learning model. Yet, for about 75 students, we will offer in-person special education servicing. And those students accessing in person had shown through our data that they were not able to access the distance learning format. So we have been extremely busy with those plans, and just want to thank Christina Nordell, who is a special education teacher, but also serves as our extended school year coordinator, because she's been working nonstop to make that happen for families. And just thank families, because usually by now, we are just putting all of the finishing touches on elements, and they're just now starting to hear this week about ours and what that will look like in locations. So I thank all of the families for their patience as we try to provide the best service for our students.
Great, thank you, Sue. Neil?
Yep, as I'll follow up on Erin's comments about her teaching and learning reopening committee, our return to Simsbury Schools Task Force continues to meet. We had a meeting yesterday to get an update. So just to let you know, there is a, we think, a pretty big moment coming a couple of days from now, on Thursday, when the governor is expected to release the guidelines for K-12 school opening. So that's a really important document that we'll be able to get our hands on and plan at a deeper level. Matt and I are going to be able to participate in a, we think, in a 10 o'clock phone call that's being arranged before the guidelines get released. So that's a big moment. Over the last couple of weeks, we've begun the work, a lot of work at the elementary level, with really a capacity analysis in looking at all the spaces and furniture and personnel in the school to see what we can do to make sure all of our K-6 students can fit in their home school in an appropriate and safe way. And we've made a lot of progress on that, which we wanted to get some planning done even before the guidance came out, and I think it's really going to give us a head start when that happens on Thursday. At the middle and high school level, my conversations with the administrators of those levels have really involved more creative looks at the schedule, trying to look at schedules differently so that you aren't moving students as frequently as you typically do in a secondary school day. So some good ideas emerging from those conversations, and again, will give us a head start after the guidance comes out. So our plan is, if the if it all comes through on Thursday, is to just let families know in a quick communication on Friday that we've received the guidance from the state and are digesting it with, as promised, our first major communication on July 1, which is consistent with the timeline that we put out to the community. So that's what I have to share tonight, and happy to take any questions if you have them.
I'm just wondering what the confidence is that the guidelines we get on Thursday are going to remain in place and not changed? Or do we have, I mean?
So, I mean, that's that's a tough one, because the data is so fluid. So I don't want to commit to that, but all indications are, and the governor said it in two interviews, that he strongly feels all K-12 students need to come back in the fall. And I know that the guidelines, I had a good solid update today, will be built around the areas of really talking about cohort size, this concept of trying to keep cohorts of children together as being just as important as social distance. So there'll be guidelines on cohorts, social distancing, transportation, which we know may be kind of the most significant challenge in terms of how it sits right now. But I hear that as the data has evolved and looked better, that that will be modified as well. So I'm pretty confident that that's the direction that we're going in, and certainly as superintendent, and I know my administrative team, that's what we were hoping for, that we can put a plan together and communicate to families and staff that we're going to be opening our doors to all kids in a in a safe way, a different way, but a safe way. So we're looking forward to doing that, Sue.
Great, thank you. Do you have anything else you want to share, Mr. Curtis?
Oh, those were the points I wanted to follow up on. Tara talked about the graduation. It was it was really a fun evening. You know, it was funny at times, it was nerve-wracking at times, but I think the the kids coming across the stage and the the parents with an opportunity to take a shot, a photo of their child right there, that energy continued, even though that night seemed endless at times, right, Tara? As we sat there, you could not tell how far back in the lot the cars were coming from. So at one point, Steve Patrina turned to me and said, we have to be close, right? And I said, oh, we have to be close to Dunn. And then somebody came and said, not quite halfway through the lot. So we, you know, had to had to refocus. I mean, you really see the size of our school in an environment like that. But the logistics to to pull it off, and then I think just the positive energy of the kids and families was really was really nice to see.
It was very loud. It was very, very loud. The horns, the screaming, it was wild.
There were horns heard all over town. I could hear them.
Because it was that way, it's like the old every there's so much pomp and circumstance with graduation, and this one was just hellfire, man. It was just going for broke, and there were there were some guy walked across the stage with inflatable diploma. He was so proud. And I mean, it was just you saw everything, and it was people were just happy, and it was a one-off, I hope, but it was it made a difference to everybody who was participated.
Yeah.
That's great. All right, so we are on to recommended actions. So.
I was listening to it streaming live. It's now on, it's now available through Vimeo. I know that, and I think the SCTV should have it very soon.
Great. So we're into recommended. I need approval of the minutes of June 9.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of June 9.
A second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The approval of the minutes of the June 16, 2020 special meeting, please?
I make a, oh, go ahead.
No, I'm so moved.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion here? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to personnel.
Yep, we have one motion, two actions to consider tonight, which are unfortunately resignations from the Simsbury Public Schools, actually, two of our newer educators. I'll start with Ally Woodruff, who's a fourth grade teacher at Squadron Line. I will note that Ally was a student of mine when I was the principal at Simsbury High School, and has done an exceptional job in her first two years in the education profession. It's not unusual for me to see some of these recent college graduates come to us for a couple of years and then head up to the Boston area, and that's what Ally will be doing with some significant friends and relationships in the Boston area, and she has secured a job outside of Boston and is quite happy about it. So we congratulate Ally, and I assured her, we're not going out of business if she ever heads back to the Farmington Valley later later on. So Ally has resigned her position as a fourth grade teacher at Squadron Line, and at Simsbury High School, a math teacher, Nicole Leveque. This one is a little more unusual in that Nicole had just achieved tenure with us after four years in the Simsbury Public Schools. Nicole has decided to take a job at Northwest Catholic. Nicole is a graduate of Northwest Catholic and very committed to that school and its culture and Catholic education, and with the opportunity to return there, that was an offer she really felt compelled to take. So Nicole will be headed there, and both of these are resignations effective June 30. And if someone could make the motion, that would be great.
I'll I'll move that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Nicole Leveque and Allison Woodruff, effective June 30, 2020.
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we're on to information and reports. Equity Council update.
Yes, and I'll just I'll just kind of intro this one, and I know that that Sue's going to take us through what I think is a really well-organized presentation. And I think it's an important evening and an important conversation, because as we've gone through the year and provided equity updates and talked about the work of our Equity Council, we've we've said at different times how important it is for us to create a common language and a common understanding in an effort for us to link the work of the Equity Council and the recommendations to our strategic planning. And really, the first step of that is an understood definition, a set of core beliefs and a stance. And I know Sue tonight, and certainly Tara and Sharon have been a big part of this work along the way, are going to talk, Sue's going to talk through the process, share that information, and have an opportunity for for Q and A with you. But it's really good timing for us as we head into the summer and we think about our strategic planning and the relaunch of the school year, in the work to come, that we have this piece in place, and it was one of the main goals of the Equity Council this year, to get this produced and provide this recommendation to the board. So I'm pleased that we have an opportunity to do that tonight.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah.
You know, certainly, as as Matt shared, this work has been embedded in our strategic plan. So as Katie advances to this first slide, this is a graphic that certainly the board is familiar with. And although equity is certainly aligned and strung through all four of our goals, whether it be student achievement, our goal around human resources, around finances, it certainly lives the heart and soul and the caring and compassionate school culture, and within our vision of the graduate, specifically around global citizenship. And so over the course of this year, I use this graphic to really capitalize on that point, but also to show the different elements of equity really encapsulated in meaningful relationships in the safe and healthy environment, not only of our Equity Council here in the schools and the district level, but also with Spirit Council, which is our community group. As I share that, I will plug that we will be having a Spirit Council meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM virtually, so certainly I can update the board on their next steps as well. So just as a reminder to the board, that the Equity Council purpose is truly twofold. And Katie, if you can advance. And the purpose of that Equity Council is to really assess the issues of the Simsbury Public Schools as an organization around equity and access to experience and outcomes for students, and then look at that information and make recommendations to the board that will really guide the strategic planning efforts of all that is accomplished through your work. And as Matt shared, today, this first recommendation is to take this equity statement out of draft form and truly look at adoption either tonight or in a future, near-future Board of Education meeting. So next slide, Katie? So I just wanted to share a little bit about the development of the statement and then go into its components. You know, we started this work, certainly our first Equity Council meeting was in September, but we started talking about the concept of having a foundational statement in October, and would come back to components each and every month. Usually, that would look like a specific teach of one component of the statement, so we can make sure that as Equity Council members, we all had the same operational definition of what we meant by that component of the statement. We would really visit some tough guiding questions in small groups and share kind of what we thought in those small groups to be a good draft and whatever element of the statement we were working on that evening. Then a small subcommittee or smaller subcommittee would look at all of that information from the larger group, really identify common themes of reflection and feedback, and then produce a next draft component for that larger group to really chew on the following month. And we would utilize the specific protocol to really see that cycle of feedback and improvement in that statement. So Katie, if you'll advance, the the next slide is really about what are the components that I was just referring to, and there are three. There's the definition, like, what do we mean by equity specifically here in the Simsbury Public Schools? Certainly, our core beliefs, what are the important ideals that we hold around equity as a school system, and our stance? What are the specific actions that we're committing to that we believe will make that definition and those core beliefs come alive in our policy, but also our practice? So I really, whenever I talk about this equity statement, I think about this as the foundation of our building, right? And the building being our entire school district, and how we use that as this important document, really just centered in this definition, the core beliefs and the actions that will guide our policies and our practices moving forward. So what I want to be able to do is share with you each one of these components in their draft element, give you, you know, a minute or two to actually read the slide, and then share with you some of the big thinking, or in some cases, some struggle and fruitful discussion we had in order to get these drafted components in front of you this evening. So the first is our definition. Just take a moment to read that through. So again, this is how we are defining equity for the Simsbury Public Schools, and want to underscore the concept of all members of our community, adults and students alike, being able to reach their full potential, and really addressing, certainly, there are many forms of marginalization, but one of the, I think, really productive struggles we had is putting racism at the kind of the first and the foremost of those elements of marginalization, because it was from an incident last February, that Equity Council was truly born. So that was a really important element of this definition that we wanted to make sure was a part of our overall statement here in Simsbury. Before I go on to the the next element, I will stop and pause after each component just to see if there's any questions as I'm as I share these components with you. Okay, well, stop me if there are, but hearing none, we'll move to the core beliefs. So again, these are our ideals and our beliefs around really being able to address that definition and make the concept of equity come alive in our policies and practices. So I'll give you a moment to review these core beliefs. So certainly, I understand that that silence can be awkward, especially if we're we're live streaming, but I I think it is important for us to just stop and pause and to look at the these ideals. You know, after the draft statement was brought forward, I also had the opportunity to share this statement and all of its components with our Administrative Council. And they certainly, I can expound on that a little bit more at the the conclusion here, but they were just really excited, quite frankly, on how this has transformed through the process, but how they commented a lot on these core beliefs, that they really feel like we got them right, and about what matters in our beliefs here for the Simsbury Public Schools. Certainly, we wanted to elaborate on the concept of growth, the importance of that personal growth, but also our collective growth, because when we know better, we do better overall, and wanted to make sure that certainly that was a theme that was magnified here in the core beliefs, the importance of having high expectations, of having healthy relationships with students, with adults among each other as participants of our Simsbury Public School community, how that accountability to each other and to equity matters. And certainly, we're all going to be at different places as this evolution continues, but that we need to have a hunger and a thirst, again, to get better and do better at this work. And when we see issues of inequity, that we stop and we make sure that we speak up and we listen to the many voices that should be heard relative to these issues of equity. Any questions around the core beliefs?
I think what I would just mention that from the work we did on these and the amount of, I mean, we did small groups, and we brought up a lot of core beliefs came to the fruition here. I mean, there were so many things that we were trying to make sure. So each of these has been thought through. So each of these has been thought through so carefully and we're trying to make sure we hit all the high marks because you don't want to have too much and confuse people and you just want to, you want to make, make the most important statements be the most important statements. So I think everyone should really tell us what they think because we've seen these a lot, those of us on the committee, Todd, Sharon, myself, and Sue and Aaron, and it would be nice to, I'd like to hear what everyone else says and what they think.
What I was going to say is I'm so happy to see that you include silence in there because all the other things are actions, but what we are learning is silence matters just as much as an action. And so I'm really happy to see that that's something that is included.
Thanks, Susan. Actually, some of the administrators did make a comment that, hey, maybe we should move that right up into the number two. Kind of not that these are hierarchical or listed by importance because they're certainly all important, but capitalizing on that thought just there, Susan, that silence definitely supports some oppression and we have to speak up.
That was, and people will remember certainly when we had the public hearing following the incident, that was an area, we got a tremendous amount of feedback on, with, from students in particular, right? And I know that the students involved in the council along the way continue to talk about that.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that. And when you get, that's a bullet that stands out, it almost as if it needs, and we've talked about it a little bit, that voice matters. And when, working with the students and talking with them, that was always at the forefront, as Matt just shared. Students were really, really interested in ensuring that voice matters in the work that we do.
I also appreciate the accountability where you actually put it in writing that it's adults as well, so that we're not just directing this at our students, that this is for everybody or it doesn't work.
That's right. That's right. And we all have a responsibility. And at the end of the day, as the adults, we're the educators. And so that accountability for our own practice and to, again, get better at what we do with and for students needs to be at the forefront of our beliefs.
And part of our action items as we go on is supporting everybody to have a voice and to letting people know that your voice is going to be heard. It's not, you don't have to be scared to have a voice. But I think, and I think expectations might go down to the last one because I think that's kind of a reiteration. And I'd put silence up where you said, I would just move a couple of those things around.
I was going to add the same thing, Sue. I think I would, just thinking, and I'm sitting here and I can hear the voices of the young folks that were part of this with us. And I too think, just in light of everything else that silence, not that they're ordered, but I think it does warrant moving it up one, you know, moving it up to be in the second. And then secondly, going back to the accountability, I think there was a lot of discussion around the accountability and the young folks wanting to ensure that it wasn't just them, that everyone, you know, is accountable for participating, for hearing and for speaking up. And that as young folks in the schools and throughout our district, they should be comfortable about going and talking to folks and expressing, you know, if they're hearing something. But if they go to a teacher, they want to know that that teacher, instructor, or whomever that adult is, that they're accountable for hearing them and then helping to do something about it. So, you know, when I look at the core beliefs personally, I mean, like everyone has said, we've been around this for a while, but to sit and see it now, knowing all the work that has gone into it and then to do that test about where we are, it feels pretty good. I mean, it feels real good.
I really like the bullet, "Silence supports the oppressors and prevents positive change." I mean, that is a very powerful statement. That is something that we are using statewide and national on that. So that in itself is also in response to, as educators, you know, to what families and students are asking us, you know, in terms of change.
The core beliefs, these are, so the first thing that we looked at was the Equity Council, I don't know if it was called the Statement of Purpose. And then we moved into, so the core beliefs, this is the district's core belief.
Correct.
I love everything and I was part of the process a little bit, so I know the amount of work and thought that went into this. But one of the things that we heard a couple of times and we've even gotten communication in the past couple of weeks about is our curriculum in the schools and how we teach equity issues. Where does that come out in these core beliefs? Is that the stories matter? Is that a different aspect of what we're talking about? Where is the part that it's kind of also our responsibility as a school district to be teaching these kind of things?
So certainly others can chime in here. I think it's in a couple of places. Certainly, I think stories matter because whose story is reflected through curriculum? Which stories are there and which stories aren't? And I believe most, the accountability piece. So, you know, certainly as educators, we have an accountability and maybe, Todd, we could circle back to your question also while we look at stance because that's around the actions that we'll take as a community that support this entire statement. So I think it's wedded in a couple of different ways. Again, through the stories, but also through the accountability that we're going to be looking at information and making changes based upon this document. And so, you know, I want to underscore that importance of this. So when we are looking at curriculum, does our curriculum reflect our core beliefs and stance and our definition or not? When we're looking at policy, again, is it reflective of the definition of our equity, our core beliefs and our stance? So hopefully that answers your question, but certainly I offer other people to chime in.
Yeah, I just, I wonder if it's, I mean, again, I'm not looking to redo everything, but is it, is it too strong a statement to say that our core beliefs should be that our curriculum should incorporate these core beliefs? I don't, that might be a little cyclical, but it-
Or curriculum, or curriculum matters?
So, yeah. I think one of the things that Sue had talked about earlier is that this certainly falls in all four categories of our strategic plan. So in the academic plan, you know, we have a statement that says we ensure that the K-12 curriculum and courses are diverse and culturally responsive. And I, you know, in talking with our teachers, our leaders, one of the best practices that I use all the time with our teachers is that we keep equity and rigorous content at the forefront of all decisions on what and how we reach, teach students. So, you know, it does permeate, but I see what you're saying, Tom. Todd, it's not right there, but it's certainly, we use the word equity, culturally responsive, diversity. And that's what we're spending an enormous amount of time looking at as we continue to refine our curriculum.
Yeah, and because I know that you are, we are, it would be nice to affirmatively say that as part of these statements.
We could look at that, for sure.
Yeah, for sure.
Sue, I was going to add, you know, like when I always talk to you and I always say that, you know, if we get to a point that everything that we do is done through an equity lens, right? Then we're covered. And so, you know, I was just going to suggest that we, because I'm, you know, sitting here and I'm listening, you know, to what's been said. But maybe if we go to the stance and then come back, just to see, we'll probably end up being the same way, same place, but.
Now let's, let's take a look. So again, the stance is around actions. What are we committing to based upon our core beliefs? So again, I'll give you a moment to read the slide. So certainly, actions around being able to recognize and address the biases and iniquities. And some people may say, well, you know, maybe you're biased and you won't be able to see those biases. So I think that that's, these are not actions that are siloed or mutually exclusive. They're actions that build upon each other, right? So we will examine and recognize our biases and equities by looking around the accountability measures that we put in place to look at data. That is going to be a huge element of our ongoing work. Certainly, we've already begun that. I will speak a little bit more in just a little bit about how the Equity Council will be looking at very Sims very specific data to unearth potential iniquities that we have in our school system. I think the other accountability measure is policy. So as policies come forward to the Board of Education for adoption, are we using this document as an equity lens from which and through which to look? And then also, a big piece of this certainly is what professional development and training are we providing, ongoing? Again, as we kind of unearth some of the root causes of what we might think might be going on as far as biases and iniquities within Simsbury, how do we address that through deepening and broadening our knowledge and understanding about how do we address these issues as educators through that professional development? And then finally, how do we guarantee access, right? So we talk about, you know, who has access to courses, experiences, opportunities, and that those opportunities expand beyond the academic and they also envelop the social and civic expectations. So to really, again, make our core beliefs come alive, we have to dedicate ourselves to these actions about the examination, about asking tough questions and getting smarter and better about the education we provide our students here in Simsbury.
Sue, I know, I know you touched on it and I think Sharon did as well, but these three points are so tied together, they're so interwoven. You know, that data analysis, as you mentioned, is crucial for us in determining access opportunities for kids and where kids sit in terms of course opportunities, for example. That data point will talk to us about biases, right? So, I mean, it's, I really think the committee is on point with these three areas in terms of a coherence that'll allow us to actually do really productive work, you know? So hats off to your conversations and process to get there.
Well, thank you. And it's been so important for all of us to certainly be a part of this work. You know, Matt and I are so proud of the group representation on Equity Council, really looking at the different perspectives and voices and very heavy on that student voice. And certainly that was purposeful because it's through hearing of that student experience, again, that we can examine and get better at what we do. So, you know, I do have a kind of a slide just for us to pause and have any initial discussion. So Katie, if you would advance us there. You know, certainly, again, I come back to the purpose of Equity Council is to make recommendations to you as board members. So the recommendation is this statement of equity here in Simsbury, inclusive of this definition, core beliefs and stance. I invite additional discussion or any additional actions that you would like us to look at or take relative to the statement.
Anybody?
I would just add this, Susan, that it would be my, my hope at the next meeting or definitely certainly over the summer, whatever we feel appropriate, that this would actually get an official vote on the Board of Education. I think that's an important statement, like we do on our Board of Education goals, right? I see it similar to that, that we get behind that common language. So really, any tweaks or changes, kind of like Todd was talking about or others have, that you would like this group to consider because we do plan to get back together this summer and we can build that timeline around that. Because I would like to get to the fall here and be able to present this language to parents and faculty. I think it's important for us.
Absolutely.
I think as soon as we can get that solidified, I think it needs, we need a tab on our, on our district page because I think people are looking for this information because we've been talking about it and there are parents and kids and they like, I think if we could see some of this great stuff and I think people would really enjoy seeing it and know that we're going in that direction. And I think that would give a real sense of calm to the town for people to know that we're, this isn't new to us and that we've been working on it and that we really have some solid things to send forward and to make action, take action with. So I think anytime we get it done, to get it on the website would be great.
So Tara, that's a really nice segue to the next slide. But you couldn't have, you couldn't have teed that up for me better, right? Right on the box there. But we, you know, I had shared at the last Board of Ed meeting and certainly was giving you an update relative to our most recent Equity Council meeting, which happened on June 4th. And because of the national landscape, we did some action planning there. And one of the first action steps was that Equity Council, although we were going to take a summer hiatus, they said, you know what, we really want to come back this summer. Either, you know, we're certainly thinking sometime in July to do the work of looking at that culture and climate data that we were going to be looking at over the months during the pandemic and even in this last Equity Council meeting. So that's certainly one of the next steps that Equity Council wanted to take. And then from that action planning, you know, there are some very specific themes. One was, hey, please get this statement in front of the board. We believe it's that important. Another was to, hey, let's get this work, certainly the statement, but the evolution of Equity Council and the outcomes of Equity Council on the website. So people can access that. And then talk about how to disseminate the statement and the process. You know, certainly there's this meeting and I hope that we have many people watching tonight on the live stream, but it's going to be important to be able to share this and say, this is what we're all about relative to equity in the Simsbury Public Schools. And this is what it means relative to additional professional development, certainly community opportunities. Again, we've been working in conjunction with the Spirit Council and certainly would like to see what their next steps are relative to equity in the larger community. And as I shared with you, really looking to compose and put together the summary document that, again, I see communicated on the website and in other places as well, relative to kind of the summary statement of Equity Council over this past year. What are our accomplishments? What's our membership? What data did we look at? What questions do we now have as a jumping point for the next couple of years in really diving deep into equity in the Simsbury Public Schools and all facets of what that would mean?
This is all, I wanted to see if we could just go back to stance for a minute. I was muted and I had a whole conversation with myself. So this is where Zoom kicks me. So what I'm wondering, Katie, can we go back to the stance slide? Great. So these three points look like actionable items. Have you assigned the responsibility for this? Is it everybody's responsibility? Who's going to be holding everybody accountable? How are we going to make sure we're looking through that equity lens and kind of rooting out those biases or iniquities? How are we making this a workable stance, I guess, is my question?
Can I jump in for a quick, quick second? So the first piece is creating the language, right? I know I'm stating the obvious. The second is tying it into our Continuous Improvement Strategic Plan, which is a format with specific measurable goals. which is a format with specific measurable goals and action items. And that will be a great thing for us to come back to, once this is approved, to demonstrate those actionable links, because they fall under a principal's purview. They involve teachers all the way down to teacher evaluation plans. So I've always said from the beginning of this work, one thing we, uh, you know, we all have areas that we need to get better at, but one thing the district for many, many years has done well is practice within that continuous improvement model. And when we put our goal language in there, we have a really good structure to ensure that those are the things we're talking about and those are the things we're measuring. So I think that will play out very effectively over time in the tool, the very tool that we created last year. I think our challenge is right now, that tool is a little separate from this work and this is our opportunity to tie it up.
Okay. And that's fair. I just wanted to kind of make sure we have the thought process of how to get to that check and balance. Um, my other question is, um, also, we do our strategic goals every five years. Are, are we going to put this on a different timeline and every two years review, every year? Like what are we thinking about a review, review cycle for this work?
So Matt, do you want to go or?
I, I do. And, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but this will be work that will be tied right into the strategic plan and the report out and the reports to the board and all those things that we already do with more of an aligned focus. So I think we embed it into our work and we talk about, as, as Sharon said, if we're doing this work right, the work we're doing is through an equity lens. So the goals and the action items that we create are created that way.
Okay.
I don't think you want two different cycles of goal setting going on at different times in the district. I think you want to incorporate it into the five-year goals with the annual report out and the annual shift in anything we need to do. So if there's an element that we feel we're not progressing on, we need to put a finer point, finer focus on it. Those are conversations that the board has with administration and we make those adjustments. Remember, our plan, um, can be modified at any time. It's a fluid, it, it's a fluid document. Um, and I think that's important to recognize as well.
And Susan, I think it comes back to where we began, you know, through all four of those strategic goals, equity is woven through it. So that first goal of student achievement, we're going to be looking at achievement data and saying, okay, where are gaps relative to inequities, right? And how do we address that? So it's achievement, there's, there's goals within that goal, objectives within that goal around curriculum. So how are we using this statement as a way to make sure that voices matter? And that is demonstrated through our curriculum, you know, then we can, and again, we can go through each and every goal through our hiring practices. And what are the focused efforts there? So-
Through the framework of everything.
Yeah, I actually think that would be a good exercise for us as we head into the fall is pull that plan back out and pull those action items back out and have the, a public conversation about the alignment. I think that would be a good exercise for the board and a, a good thing to do publicly for people watching as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it helps us all kind of reset too, as we move into the next school year. I think that, that would be really valuable.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else has anything. I didn't mean to hog up a bunch of time there, but jump in if you do. Okay. Well, I, I thank everybody on the Equity Council. This has been, this is fabulous work and I know it wasn't easy, um, to get to and kind of all the, you know, all the good stuff is always born out of the hard work. So thank you all for all the time you dedicated to it. Um, really appreciated and I'm so glad that you have such a great working group.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you to everyone for your support.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, um, we are at the end of our meeting, everybody. This might be a record for us. Um, so, uh, future business will be, our next board meeting is slated for July 14th. Um, I don't know if we're meeting on Zoom or in person. I guess we'll have to see how that all goes. Uh, but we can certainly talk about it before then, but just mark your calendar for July 14th.
And I would see that as a pretty lengthy report out on the back to school opening, as well as I'd like to bring the, the language back for potential approval for the board would be two things I would want to-
That'd be great. Yeah. I think that's important. So hopefully y'all are around that day. Um, mark your calendars and we'll watch our website. We'll figure out how we're having it. And I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
A second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you all very much. Thanks again for all the hard work and we'll see you all soon.